Good morning Eggs. Thank you for joining me for this nourishing breath work. Half an hour of breathing to nourish ourselves. And then we'll come into just five minutes of explanation or maybe talk a little bit about what we've been working with, how it helps us. And then we can, or I can answer any questions you have. So to begin with this morning, you need to find a comfortable seat. Preferably a firm chair or stool. So you feel you can sit upright with your hips level with, or even just a little bit higher than your knees. And this is so we've got enough space for the belly to expand with the breath. And if you take a moment to find your comfortable seated position, I wanted to start with a quote from Don Afari. She's a wonderful yoga teacher, but she does a lot of work as well with the breath. Breath is an integral part of yoga. And she writes, breathing is one of the simplest things in the world. We breathe in, we breathe out. When we breathe with real freedom, we need neither grasp or hold on to the breath. No effort is required to pull the breath in or to push the breath out. Given the simplicity of breathing, one would think it was the easiest thing to do in the world. However, if it were truly so easy, there would be few unhappy or unhealthy people in the world. To become a welcome vessel for the breath is to live life without trying to control, grasp or push away. And how easy is this? The process of breathing is the most accurate metaphor we have for the way that we personally approach our life. How we live our lives and how we react to the inevitable changes that life brings us. So I'm going to pop that to one side. Just something to ponder maybe as we come through our breath work. And I may read it again at the end, just to see how maybe it resonates in a different way. So to begin with, making sure you have your feet. At least hip distance are a bit wider apart. I often measure hip distance with two fists coming together softly between the feet. If that, if you're not sure about hip distance, it's a really good way of just measuring the gap between the feet. So hip distance are a little bit wider. We want to make sure our feet are parallel. So the toes are pointing forward. And we're able to sit upright in our firm seat. We're going to roll the shoulders just once up softly all the way down. And the hands can rest wherever feels comfortable for you. So you want to imagine you've got a piece of string on the top of your head. Someone's very gently pulling from the crown of the head. So you have a natural lift through the spine. And from here, you're welcome simply to soften the gaze or maybe close the eyes. And begin to tune into your breath. So to begin with, just noticing your breath. Trying to breathe in and out through the nose if you can. Where can you feel your breath? Maybe you can feel your chest rising and falling. Caroline. Maybe you can feel your rib cage expanding. Maybe you can feel some movement in and around your belly or your lower back. There's no right or wrong answer, just noticing where you can feel the breath moving to as you breathe in. And breathe out.
I don't know if she's done some line.
I'm beginning to notice where you feel the breath start. Where's the origin of your breath? Do you find when you breathe in, you're breathing in and the chest is moving first? Or when you breathe in, is it maybe your belly? It might be another area of your body. Simply bringing your awareness, noticing where your breath begins. And next, beginning to feel.
Caroline.
The length of your inhalation and your exhalation. So maybe you noticed one is slightly longer than the other. Maybe they feel the same length.
See all that you put in. There's not two words in that message that she sent me. You've got it in the text, I can't get in. Can you just cut a space back and put it into your portion?
And next, noticing the texture of the breath. And by that, I mean, does it feel smooth? Does it feel like it's Maybe it feels a little rough or ragged. So noticing the texture. With no self criticism or judgment, we're just noticing how our breath is this morning. The different qualities of our breath. And how it feels for us. Making sure you still feel you're upright. With length through the back of the body. If your eyes are closed. Gently opening them. Coming back into the space, the room you're in. And we're going to come through a little movement. So we've got a lot of muscles that help us breathe. The muscles around the rib cage and intercostal muscles. We've got the chest muscles here, pectorals, trapezius in the back, shoulders. And all these muscles can get a little bit tight. And we need to soften and lengthen and find space in them. So the breath, the lungs, the rib cage can expand a little more. So we're going to come through a little bit of movement. And to begin with, we're going to work with the head and neck. We've got a lot of secondary respiratory muscles in the head and neck. So these are muscles that also help with our breathing. You're welcome to close your eyes at any point. Nothing should hurt. So there's no strain and no pain. So easing off or actually coming back to this seated, seated position if anything feels uncomfortable. We're going to take our right ear towards our right shoulder. Allow the ear to settle here or the head to settle in this position. And then if you feel you want something a little stronger, you can take your right hand towards the head and gently encourage the right ear a little closer to the right shoulder. Releasing the hand, if you were using your hand and gently slowly bringing the head back to center. And then we'll drop the left ear towards the left shoulder. Again, taking a moment here. And this gives us time for the, for the body to tell the brain what's happening. You may find you're a little tighter or stiffer on one side. And then if you know you want a little bit of a stronger stretch on this side, you can bring the left hand towards the head. And gently encourage the ear towards the shoulder a little further. Releasing the hand if you were using your hand and gently bringing the head to center. We're going to turn to look towards our right. Not going too far at this point, just looking towards the right hand side. Coming back through center. And looking towards the left. And slowly coming back to center. We'll tuck the chin towards the chest. It might just be a very small movement. Or maybe you bring the chin all the way towards the chest. Could sometimes feel a little bit tight in the back of the neck, the shoulders. So just making sure there's no strain here. There's no pain. Slowly bring the head back to center. And then we're taking the gaze towards the sky, being mindful not to throw the head back. And coming back to center. We're going to come into a slightly stronger twist now. I like to raise my arms. So I'm not tempted to use my hands in this. So you're very welcome to have the hands resting still in the lap. Maybe you bring them up towards the chest, elbows hugging the rib cage, palms facing up towards the sky. And we're turning to look towards the right hand side, but now the shoulders are moving as well. If you find there's any tightness in the, in the neck or the upper spine. Coming back. Easing off. So as we nourish ourselves through our breath, we want to make sure the breath doesn't change with any movements we make. Coming back through center. And moving towards the left hand side. And coming back to center. Releasing the arms if you did have them raised. And we're going to take a slightly stronger twist now. So again, listening to your body. And if anything feels a little bit too tight or too forced, just easing off and coming back to a softer, gentler option. You're going to take our left hand towards the outside of our right knee. And then I'm going to bring my right hand either to the chair or it can actually just dangle down. Maybe even hold onto the back of the chair. We're turning towards the right hand side. Maybe you go a little further, maybe the gaze is able to go all the way around towards the back of the room you're in, to the back of the chair. And you can adjust the hand position, the right hand position to whatever feels comfortable for you. If the shoulders have raised, just see if you can drop them a little. So here, if you're feeling okay, we're taking this slightly stronger twist. We've got a twist from the base of the spine all the way to the crown of the head. And we know that the flexibility of our spine is directly related to how we breathe. So if we're able to bring some flexibility towards the spine. We're able to breathe a stronger breath to nourish ourselves. Slowly taking your time to come back to center, especially if you're in the strongest version of that twist. Resetting, finding length again in the spine and we'll move towards the left hand side. So this time the right hand's coming towards the outside of the left leg. The left hand can come to wherever feels comfortable on the chair or behind you on the chair. Taking it slowly, easing yourself around. And maybe the gaze goes all the way behind you. Softening the shoulders. And it may feel very different on this side. So we have a habitual side, a side we tend to use a little more than the other. And this may find, you may find this side is a little bit tighter. So being gentle with yourself, especially if it's a morning breathing practice. In the mornings we get up, we've not had a chance to move, to warm up. So it's really important to be gentle with the body. And very slowly coming back to center. We're going to take a couple of movements before we come into some more breath work. We're going to take a very soft side stretch. So leaning towards the right hand side. The right hand can always dangle and bringing the left hand to the rib cage if that feels comfortable. If it feels too strong for the shoulder, you can just allow the arm to drop. And you may begin to feel the left rib cage moving with the breath. Slowly making your way back up to sitting or move to the other side. So now we're taking the right hand towards the rib cage if that feels comfortable for the shoulder. And leaning towards the left hand side. A little bit of a side stretch. So we have a lot of muscles in the rib cage, intercostal muscles around the side here that help us breathe. We don't often use them or stretch them in this way. So really important to nurture, stretch all the muscles that help us breathe. And very slowly coming up to center. And we'll take one last movement before we come back to our conscious breath work. So we're coming into a rounded shoulder position here. It's almost like we're trying to pull our shoulder blades apart and the gaze can come towards the floor. Hands can rest here in the lap. And then we're going to open the chest. The chest is lifting up towards the sky. Softness here in the shoulders, shoulders moving down away from the ears. And it's almost like we're bringing the shoulder blades together. So this can be a very small movement. Or maybe it's a very large movement if you're used to making this motion, this movement through the spine. The gaze can come down to look towards your feet as you curl round in a sort of hunchback position. And the gaze can go up towards the sky as you start to open the chest. Being mindful not to throw the head back. It's just a gaze upwards. The head doesn't need to go all the way back. So we're just keeping the cervical spine. So that's the neck really safe. And as you come through this movement, sometimes when we concentrate, we stop breathing, we hold our breath. Just notice if you are still breathing. And if you can, we're breathing in to look up. And breathing out. To look down, to hunch the spine over. Breathing any way that feels comfortable for you. So if you're breathing in through the nose, out through the mouth or in and out through the nose, or even in and out through the mouth. Whatever feels good as we just begin to stretch the spine, you may notice or have a sense of us creating a little bit of space in between each vertebrae. And this is going to help us breathe and expand the lungs when we come into stillness. Taking one more round here. And finding your way back to your seated position. So have a little check in with how you are sitting. We want the feet to be flat on the floor, hip distance are a little wider. There's length through the spine. So it's almost like somebody's pulling us up from the crown of the head, just gently, there's a lift there. And the shoulders are soft, so they're drawing down away from the ears. We're going to begin by bringing the hands towards the belly. And if at any point this feels uncomfortable or doesn't feel right for you, just come back to this starting seated position. And just focus on the breath. Welcome to soften your gaze or close your eyes. And with the hands on your belly. Have a sense that you're directing your breath to the belly. So as you breathe in. Your belly is expanding, it's ballooning. And as you breathe out, it's almost like the belly is deflating. And this may be happening relatively easily for you. You may be able to feel the expansion of the belly. And the gentle drawing back as you breathe out. In to expand. And as you breathe out. The belly is deflating. But if it's not happening, if it doesn't come easily to you, to your body, that's okay. Cause actually just visualizing the breath. Working the belly in this way, it's firing the neurons in the brain. So the electrical activity in the brain. So as we visualize this happening, it's having the same effect on the nervous system as if it was physically happening. Breathing in to expand the belly and breathing out. Drawing the belly back, maybe it becomes more of a conscious effort. Or maybe you find it's just naturally deflating. Taking one more breath here. And then we're moving the hands to the rib cage. So you'll be able to feel the ribs. Hands at the front, trying to keep the shoulders soft and relaxed. And we're doing the same exercise here. So breathing into the hands, that sense of touch is helping us guide our breath. So we're breathing here into the lower lobes of the lungs. And you may feel the rib cage expand as you breathe in. And deflate as you breathe out. Still breathing in and out through the nose if you can. One more breath here. And bringing the hands to the upper chest. Just when you're ready, the fingertips can maybe rest on the collarbones. And once again, we're going to be using the hands to guide our breath. So as we breathe in. It's almost like we're guiding the breath to the hands and it's the upper chest that's moving. It's likely to be a smaller movement than the rib cage or the belly. One more breath here. And releasing the hands and taking the hands to the lower back. So it's almost like we're directly behind our belly. And finding any position you can for the hands that feels comfortable. If the shoulders are tight, just release the hands, allow them to rest in the lap. And either guiding the breath, so breathing into the lower back, into the hands. Maybe you're able to visualize the breath if the hands are there, not there to guide you. One more breath here. Releasing the hands, allowing them to rest in the lap. And now beginning to breathe into the back of the rib cage. If you feel you can reach the back of the rib cage with the hands, then please do place the hands on the back of the rib cage. Otherwise, we're visualizing the breath moving into the back of the middle of the back. Still breathing in and out through the nose if that feels comfortable for you. And then we're slowly moving up the back of the body. So we're directing the breath into the upper back now. This is where if you have the hands on the middle of the rib cage at the back of the body, releasing them. Allowing them to rest. And visualizing the breath moving into the upper back. So as we breathe in, maybe you notice a little bit of movement in the upper back. Maybe you don't, that's okay too. We've just been working through waking up the lungs, so the lower lobes, the mid lobes and the upper lobes. So each section of the lungs at the front and the back of the body. And actually nearly 70% of our breath moves into the back of the lungs. One more breath here. And then we're going to come back to trying to incorporate each area. So as we breathe in, it's almost like we're imagining we're filling a glass of water. We're going to fill the belly and the lower back. We're going to aim to fill the rib cage at the front and the back of the body. And then we're going to aim to fill the upper back and the upper chest. Work with this, just notice how it feels. It may not immediately happen for you. But again, if we can visualize the idea of the breath coming through the torso, filling our kind of torso and all the capacity we have for the breath. Then we can have the same effect on the nervous system. So welcome to close the eyes or keep the gaze just soft, gentle. Making sure you have the upright spine, space in the body, softness in the shoulders. And as you breathe, begin to breathe in, breathing into the belly. The mid and upper chest at the front and the back of the body and breathing out. So no self criticism or judgment if an area is not woken up or if you can't feel the breath in that part of the body. Nourishing ourselves through the breath we have and the breath we've cultivated through this practice. And working with your own breathing rhythm, you'll notice I haven't guided you too much as in and out, in and out, because we all have our own unique breathing rhythm. So breathing in. Until you feel you've filled your glass of water. And breathing out. As you empty that glass of water. as you empty that glass of water. You're welcome now to join me in a, it's like an ocean breathing technique, a ha breath. So if you've been breathing in and out through the nose, this is going to change slightly. We're going to breathe in through the nose and out through the mouth. So almost the sound of the sea. Breathing in through the nose and out through the mouth. If it helps to imagine or visualize the filling of the glass of water and emptying, please do carry on with that imagery. And taking three more breaths in this way. In through the nose and out through the mouth. Once you've taken those three breaths, coming back to your regular, your normal breathing. We're going to just very simply observe the breath now compared to how we began. The eyes can remain closed if that helps you focus inwards, really focus on listening and focusing on the breath. Beginning to notice where the breath is moving to. You may find it's moving to the same areas, maybe it's expanded a little bit, it's got a little bit deeper. Can you notice where the breath starts as you breathe in? The origin of the breath? Has that changed at all? Do the inhalation and exhalation feel the same as they did at the beginning? Do they feel a little bit longer or deeper? And also noticing the texture of the breath. So does the breath feel smoother? Softer? Gentler? Maybe it's still or does feel a little rough, a little rugged. Especially if we're not used to practicing breath work. Always just noticing, no judgment or self criticism, just bringing our awareness to our breath. And then beginning to notice how you feel. So that's almost around half an hour of breath work. Breathing, noticing our breath, bringing some movement to the body so we feel we've got more space for the breath. And then coming back to consciously breathing, to breath work again. Notice how your body feels, particularly the torso, the breath, maybe even the mind. And I'd like to say thank you for joining me this morning. Or if you're watching this video, this recording, thank you for taking the time to nourish yourselves with breath work. But most importantly, thanking yourself for turning up for some breath work, some self care for you. Making the time, making the space. It's really hard to find the time at the moment for self care, especially for those of us that are homeschooling as well. So thanking yourself for taking some time for you. And I wanted to finish again with a quote from Donofari. And then I'll explain a little bit more about the breath. You're welcome to tune out at this point, but I'll talk through the anatomy and the thought process through the breath work as well. Breathing is one of the simplest things in the world. We breathe in, we breathe out. When we breathe with real freedom, we neither grasp for or hold on to the breath. No effort is required to pull the breath in or to push the breath out. Given the simplicity of breathing, one would think it was the easiest thing to do in the world. However, if it were truly so easy, there would be few unhappy or unhealthy people in the world. To become a welcome vessel for the breath is to live life without trying to control, grasp or push away. And how easy is this? The process of breathing is the most accurate metaphor we have for the way that we personally approach our life. How we live our lives and how we react to the inevitable changes that life brings us. And I wanted to explain a little bit more about what Donofari means there. So our breath reflects our emotions and how we're feeling. So if you've ever been very upset, almost sobbing, you will have noticed the lungs kind of vibrating, almost mimicking our feeling and our emotion. When we feel scared or surprised or upset, you may take a gasp. And once again, the lungs, the breath are reflecting how we're feeling or the situation we're in. And we spend most of our days not really thinking about how we're breathing. We're just breathing automatically, it's an automatic part of our bodily functions. But when we bring our consciousness, when we actually think about how we're breathing and bring the focus to our breath, we can start to control, to manipulate the breath. And through that, we have a sense of control over our body, but also a sense and a way of calming ourselves down if we ever need that, a sense of self care and support. So the breath is one of the ways we can access the central nervous system. And one part of the nervous system is called the autonomic nervous system. So we're getting into a little bit more detail here for those of you who are interested. There's the parasympathetic nervous system, which is the rest and digest side. And the sympathetic nervous system. So this is a side that we use when we get a fright, tells us fright or flight is sometimes how it's described. We need the sympathetic because that helps us react quickly if we need to. It supports us and how we feel, what we're doing, the actions we're taking, what we may be threatened by or faced with. But actually, sometimes what we do in stressful situations, or if we're feeling anxious or nervous, that sympathetic side, that fight or flight side is switched on and it stays on. So we have all these kind of stress hormones starting to build up in the body. And this can really unnerv and unsettle us and make us feel really very tense, very stressed, but it also affects the breath. We tend to have a shallower, shorter breath that sometimes moves into the upper body, into the upper chest. So if we could switch on the parasympathetic nervous system when we need to, so that's the rest and digest side, activate that slightly longer breathing. Breathing into the belly that we did, making sure we were trying to breathe into each section of the body. That doesn't always come easily straight away, it can take some practice. Longer breath will nurture that side of the nervous system. And as we took the ha or the ocean breath, we're creating a soothing sound. So that's helping to soothe our nervous system, to help us calm down. But you may have noticed, you may have noticed that as we breathe out with a we tend to, not always, but we tend to exhale for a little bit longer. And that's another way we can really tune on and switch on that side of the nervous system. So we worked through a couple of breathing techniques there, observing the breath. So simply just observing the texture, how it feels, where we can feel it. And that's a lovely conscious breathing technique, you can use it anytime during the day, seated in a chair. Sometimes I do the standing or even lying down. But also, we came through some movement to make space for the breath in the body. So just stretching out the muscles so we feel that everything in the lungs and the back of the body can expand as we inhale. And then we came through a separate breathing technique. So nurturing the breath to come through all the parts of the body that we should feel a little bit of movement in. So I always like to say, there isn't a right or a wrong way to breathe, but there is a supportive nourishing way to breathe. We all breathe in different ways. And why do we breathe through our nose? Or why should we breathe through our nose? So our mouth is, it's great to breathe through our mouth, especially if we have a cold or an allergy, it's a kind of backup system. And sometimes it can just feel more supportive to breathe through our mouth. But it's more efficient to breathe through our nose. So the blood vessels on the inside of the nose, they warm up the breath. So as we warm the breath up, as the breath enters the nose, the warm breath is ready for the lungs to receive. So you'll know if you've ever taken a gasp outside in the cold air, the lungs get a bit of a shock. So as we breathe through the nose, the air is warmed in the nasal cavity, ready for the lungs to receive. We've got lots of little fine hairs in the nostrils, so they feel throughout any dust, particles and dirt or pollution as well. So it's like a filter action as well. And there's an element to it as well, nitric oxide. It's kind of involved in the process of creating nitric oxide, which is a, I guess a chemical, you can describe it as a chemical. But that helps kill any bacteria as well. So really good for our immune system to breathe in and out through the nose. And our breath supports many systems. So if we can cultivate a really supportive, slow nourishing breath and help trigger or switch on or activate that parasympathetic nervous system, that rest and digest side, then what we are actually doing is we're helping to support our digestive system. Because that's when it works optimally, when we're feeling calm and supported and rested. The same goes for our immune system, our cardiovascular system. So you'll know that as the breath slows, the heart is able to slow. And also our lymphatic system. So this is linked to the immune system, but it's great for, or what it does is it takes out the toxins out of our blood. So again, movement, a little bit of movement, but also our breath work helps support that system. And finally, the endocrine system. So this is the system that works with our hormones. It releases the cortisol, that's one of the stress hormones. But also, it's, we're able through our breath to be able to support and calm that down and support the endocrine system as well. So as you can see, the breath is almost the key to our body working really well and functioning really well. But actually, it's just about taking a couple of minutes. It can be a minute of breathing as you're standing at the kitchen cooking or you're doing something else. If you've been working from home and you're sitting at a desk, just taking those two minutes to bring focus to the breath and allow the breath to slow. So I hope that's been helpful. If you have any questions, please do share them in the chat or unmute yourself. I'm going to stop the recording here and now, so I can share that with fellow eggs. And if you're watching the recording, please do comment on the Egg Facebook page, just ask away. I'm always around to answer any questions around the breath. But thank you for joining me and I hope you'll join me again soon for maybe another breath work class.